It is Monday, May 11th, and we're doing it by the way of Zoom, and it is now 6:30. I'll call the roll. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Guarino?
Present.
And we also have Mrs. Oden, I'm here, and joining us is Jessica Brown. Also joining us is Dan Donovan and Para Kinsella. Okay. The first thing on the, and also, I'm sorry, Lisa Gingras, how could I forget you, Lisa? You're headlining this tonight. The first thing on the agenda is the adoption of an Athletic Hall of Fame Special Revenue Fund. So Lisa, if you want to speak to that, we'd appreciate it.
Great. Thank you very much for allowing me to come and speaking with you, speaking with you this evening about this. As I hope many of you are aware, we have brought back the National Athletic Hall of Fame. The Hall of Fame was in existence from 91 to 2000 where we inducted over 107 members. In the summer of 2018, we started the process of resurrecting the Hall of Fame and bringing it back to fruition in our city. In almost 20 years, there have been a lot of athletes, plus many athletes prior to 91 that had not yet been inducted. In past, in fact, this past Saturday, we were supposed to hold our induction, but due to the pandemic, we needed to postpone that until October. Since bringing back the Hall of Fame, we have been putting all of our funds in a Student Activity Fund at Nashua North. All of our donations, our sponsorships, ticket sale money, paying for the venue, things like that, have been put in a Student Activity Fund. And Dan and I had spoken about this several times throughout the process, and most recently in February, when we decided to put this on the agenda then, we had assumed at that point we would have had the induction this weekend and paid most of our bills from that. In talking with Dan, we talked about the fact that a more appropriate means of funding that would be through a Special Revenue Fund. So I'm hoping that you'll recommend approval of a new Special Revenue Fund for the National Athletic Hall of Fame.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Donovan?
Yes, then from an accounting point of view, this is the appropriate action to take. We, Student Activity Funds are very separate. We want to keep that separate from all kinds of other funds. This is not, obviously, it's Athletic Hall of Fame for people who have graduated, not for existing students. So I think this makes total sense to establish a Hall of Fame Special Revenue Fund. Once the committee and full board approves this, it will go to the Board of Aldermen where the account will be established.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody on the committee have any questions? Comments? Ms. Brown? No? You either? Okay. Well, I think I'm looking for a motion. Would anybody like to bring a motion forward?
I will move to establish the fund for the Hall of, what is it, Hall of Fame? For Nashua Athletes.
I'll second it.
Okay. I think it's appropriate, as Mr. Donovan has stated. So can we take a vote on it? Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And I'm yes. So that passes unanimously, and you can send that down to the Alderman. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the Spring Coaches. Ms. Gingras, you're up again.
Thank you very much. This one may be a little bit more of a discussion to bring forward. In terms of the agenda item paying Spring Coaches, you do actually have in your packets two separate letters that kind of fall under that. So if we can address the first one being paying the Athletic Coordinators and Equipment Managers. These are individuals at the five secondary schools. We have an Athletic Coordinator in each high school as well as in each of the middle schools. And we also have Equipment Managers, one at each high school. At Nashua South, although it is one position, we do have two people who share that position. So we're talking about eight people in total. These individuals work basically year-round, doing all kinds of things. The Athletic Coordinators during a season, they're the day-to-day operations of buses and schedules and rescheduling and setting up for events and managing events and things like that. Whereas our Equipment Managers, they're really the ones that make sure our teams have, you know, any basketballs or baseballs or footballs that they need, the uniforms that they need. They're also responsible for all the record-keeping of who has what uniform, who hasn't returned it, and then chasing the students down who haven't returned it yet. They also take all of those uniforms and wash them and store them for the off-season until it's time to use them again. So these people are traditionally, it's a stipended position, and they are paid three times per year when we pay our seasonal coaches. So although we didn't have a spring season, I feel very strongly that these eight individuals should receive 100% of their stipend, and thus, the third payment being paid in June should be equal to the previous two. Even though we didn't have a spring season, these individuals have still been working. They've been doing some of the cancellations, they've been communicating with coaches, they've been communicating with our student athletes, they've still been running their student leadership programs, they've been doing equipment, they've been doing, chasing down uniforms. We do not have Equipment Managers at the middle school level, so the middle school coordinators are also responsible for chasing down the uniforms and preparing them for the next season and things like that. So the first thing I'm asking is for a recommendation to approve that those individuals receive their third payment in full, and that is scheduled for June 4th. Sorry, Mrs. Oden, just one other thing. Everything I'm going to be speaking about tonight has been budgeted in this year's operating budget, so we're not looking for any additional funds.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
What is the amount that you're asking for?
The total amount left to pay for the Athletic Coordinators is 6,100, and the Equipment Managers is about 3,200. And again, that's the remaining amount left of their salaries, of their stipends.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Which one of these would be responsible for transportation? Either one of these?
So at the middle school level, the Athletic Coordinators do the scheduling of buses and making sure that the buses are there, that the teams get on the buses and things like that. At the high school level, the two Athletic Secretaries primarily will do the scheduling of buses. But the Athletic Coordinators, we all, we all work very closely together. So although the scheduling is the secretary's responsibility, often those buses are leaving after the secretaries have left for the day. So the Athletic Coordinators and myself are responsible if a bus is late, or a bus doesn't show up, or brings them to the wrong location, or anything like that.
Okay. Okay, anybody have any questions or comments? My understanding is this doesn't have to be voted upon tonight. We can, we can think about this some more. Is that right, Mr. Donovan? This isn't a decision that needs to be made tonight?
Not necessarily. Though I agree for these people, since they're year-round positions, I think, I think paying these, because they basically do, in a sense, they start working in the summer, we don't pay them until December. And then, you know, so we pay them as we pay each one of the coaches. So I think this piece of it, I think the next piece that Lisa's going to speak to, maybe you might want to think about it more, but I think this one, you could probably approve now.
And if I'm correct, it's a total of $9,300?
Approximately, yes.
Okay. Okay.
And as Mr. Donovan mentioned, these individuals, I mean, even though they're paid three times a year, the work isn't necessarily equally divided among those three times. There's a lot of work they do between July and school starting. Over the summer, when all the New Year's equipment comes in, they have to inventory that and put that away and make sure it gets to the coaches in a timely manner and things like that. So although they're due a third of their stipend, a lot of their work has been done.
Okay, okay. Does anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Guarino? You're muted?
I'm sorry, I thought I I moved to approve the pay for Athletic Coordinators and Equipment Managers, sum of 90, for a total sum of $9,300. Is that their third payment? Yes, their third payment.
Okay. I'll second that, Mr. Guarino.
Okay.
Okay. So the motion is to pay the Coordinators and the Equipment Managers a total of $9,300 for the third installment of their salary. Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is yes, so that passed unanimously. Okay, and the next issue is the coaches, Lisa?
Yes. Thank you for approving those first two. I was, I was hoping those two would be a little quick. This is something I know could potentially be a little controversial in terms of paying our Spring Coaches, since we did not have a spring season. I know you have the letter and the numbers in your packets, but just to speak to it a little bit more, education-based athletics is much, much more than coaches showing up on the first day of the season, coaching their team throughout the season, and saying goodbye after rewards night in the spring, or during any season. Education-based athletics are much more about our coaches being role models, our coaches monitoring the students' academics, monitoring the students' behavior throughout the year. No coach wants the start of the season to come and then to find out a student has been deemed academically ineligible and can't even participate, or a student has been suspended too many times and can no longer participate. So our coaches are really, although they're seasonal coaches, they are working year-round with the students, especially our varsity coaches at the high school level. All of our coaches have committed to the time required to coach for a school. Being available at 2:00, 2:30 in the afternoon, being available weekends, being available nights, all of the coaches that were currently listed as our stipended coaches committed to that. Some of them had to make arrangements due to daycare so that they could coach. Some individuals gave up other coaching positions to coach for Nashua. Some of them gave up part-time jobs to coach for Nashua. So they committed that time to us, although we never had that season. Many of our coaches also hold off-season workouts. So they've been working all winter, all fall, all summer in preparation for the spring season. Even though they didn't have that season, they've put in that time and that effort, as did the student athletes. A lot of our coaches help with the college recruiting process. So for our juniors and our seniors, a lot of the coaches have been working on their own time with those upperclassmen that have aspirations to compete at the next level. So they've been putting in that time. A lot of our coaches, the day after the season ended last year, started working with student athletes in some form or fashion. Many of our coaches have already had preseason meetings and looked at what are our trials going to look like, and started meeting with the kids, separate from actual workouts. During the remote learning, since the beginning of March or the middle of March, a lot of our coaches, who are also teachers, have added an additional Google Classroom and have been working with students who were interested in being on their teams. So for instance, there could be a North Baseball Google Classroom out there where those students are getting together and talking about what are the things that they could be doing individually to continue to get themselves better, stronger, and faster in preparation for the next time they play that sport. So a lot of our coaches have been doing that. A lot of them have been having Google meets, Google hangouts, just staying connected with those students. I know through a lot of this, we've heard a lot about our students' mental health and their social-emotional status. Our coaches are another adult in front of them, they're supporting them, helping them get through this. A lot of our coaches are still working with students on their college essays. A lot of our coaches are still working with students, preparing them for what classes are they going to take next year, and tutoring them in their current classes to make sure that they're prepared for the next level. Helping them with NCAA eligibility guidelines and core courses and all of those things, and the sliding scale and the GPA at that level. Another things that our coaches have done is each and every one of our coaches has to have certain certifications. They have to be CPR and First Aid certified, they have to be concussion certified, they have to be Coaching Principles course certified. A lot of our coaches have done this between the end of last spring season and what was anticipated to be the start of this spring season. So I could go on and on and on and on about all of the things that coaches have done and why they should be paid. In a perfect world, I would love to see all of the coaches who had been hired for the season pay their full stipend, but I also understand the financial situation that all of the remote learning and being paid or not being paid has brought with it. So that's why in my proposal and the letter that I put, I, if they can't all get 100%, I would ask that the head varsity coaches receive 80% of their expected stipends, and all sub-varsity assistant coaches and middle school coaches get at least 50%. I think that would be a good faith compromise that shows our coaches how much we value them. We have talked in several forums previous to this about how our coaches are very underpaid compared to the amount of time and effort and work that they do in surrounding communities and other Division One schools, and I think this would just at least show them that they are valued and they are an important part of the educational community in our city.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Ms. Gingras? Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, I would like Mr. Donovan to explain this a little bit now, with how it was broken down for us.
Are you, are you speaking about the memo?
I'm speaking about, you know, with the coaches on how to pay them, you know, the payout here. That's what I'd like, I guess that's at the bottom of the letter, proposed, proposal regarding paying Spring Coaches. So the stipends on how you broke it out with the 80%, 50%, I'd like to hear a little bit more on that.
Dan, you want me to go through that?
Yeah, Lisa put that memo together.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
So looking at the table, I assume you're talking about the tape near the bottom of that proposal? Okay. So what I tried to break down for you, once again, this money is currently budgeted in the current year operating budget. So if you look at all of our high school and middle school coaches, if everyone were to be paid 100% of their stipend, it would come, excuse me, it would come to about $88,000 if we paid all Spring Coaches full stipend. The next line there, there were seven, I believe, positions for this spring that went unfilled. So we have seven open positions that haven't been offered to anybody, didn't go through the board approval process. So across the board, that alone is a $12,000 savings, because we, we don't have people to pay, because nobody was hired in those positions. So if we paid out all of the Spring Coaches minus that $12,000, that would use up $76,000 roughly of the stipended value. So if everyone's paid 100%, those are the numbers, the high school breakdown, the middle school breakdown, and the total there. If it is decided not to pay in full, and you accept the proposal of paying head varsity coaches 80% and middle school assistant, sub-varsity coaches at 50%, then it would come out to those numbers in the middle there. It would be about $42,000 at the high school level, about a little under $12,000 at the middle school level, so it would be a little bit under $4,000. If you're math, looking at a full amount times 80%, the numbers don't come out exactly the same, and the reason for that is not all coaches have the same stipend. So different sports have different stipends. Based on experience level of a coach, there's different stipended amounts. So the, the $42,000 isn't exactly 80% of the $60,000. So I didn't give you the detailed breakdown per person of what that would be, but we could certainly get that for you. So what I tried to explain here at the bottom is, based on the original total 100% Spring Coach stipend of $88,000, if we eliminate the $12,000 that aren't being paid, because we don't have coaches to pay, and we pay them at the 80%, 50% proposal, we would save out of this year's operating budget approximately $34,000, which is almost the same as the money we are losing in the athletic revenue of spring sports.
You can continue, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. So in order for me to break this out and figure this out, how many coaches are, we can, you know, just kind of divide it out so we know basically how much each coach is getting? I mean, because if we paid them at 100%, $60,489, or we pay 80% or 50% on the middle school coaches and 80% on the high school coaches, how many coaches are there, so I get an idea what they're getting? Because if I look at this, I would just, anybody would look at this, they would think that, okay, a coach is getting $60,489, or if we do 80%, it's going to be $42,114. So, you know, so you really need to break out, and you just kind of get a rough idea, rounding it up, how much everybody's getting.
You are correct. Just to, I thought I had that information right here with me, but I do not. I'm trying to pull it up on my computer. In the spring at the middle school, we have baseball, softball, boys and girls track, so we have 15 coaches at the middle school level. So their, their salaries are roughly the same, but they're not exactly the same, because again, a coach who makes, excuse me, a coach who has been coaching for 15 years makes more than a coach that's been coaching for two. So each person does not make the same. So looking at the middle school coaches here, I do have the document here. So the middle school, it is, it's 13 coaches, because we did have three openings. And their full salaries range anywhere between $736 and $2,000. A baseball or softball coach with 15 years' experience makes $2,083, and one of our assistant track coaches who has only a few years' experience makes the $736.
Is that what you needed, Ms. Johnson?
So that's the middle school. What about the high school? So it's roughly about, the high end is $2,000, the low end is $736.
Yes.
Okay, now how many coaches are at the high school?
So at the high school level, I have 29 coaches who would be paid. We had five open positions at the high school level.
So there's approximately, I'm just going to say high level. So it's about, if I did it with 29 coaches, it's about $2,300, maybe $2,300, a little over $2,300.
Yep, and looking at our, our high school coaches, full stipend ranges anywhere from $408 for an assistant unified coach up to little over $3,000 for a coach with 15 years' experience coaching head coach of one of our varsity sports.
Not a lot of money, but it also isn't their fault over what happened here either.
Correct. Correct.
You know, and somebody might need a little bit of this money right now. I don't know what their situation is, but thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Guarino, do you have anything, any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay. Ms. Brown, I know you're not a member of the committee, but you took the time to come. Do you have any?
No, thank you very much. I appreciate the breakdown of this. This is really informative.
Okay. Ms. Gingras, I, I have a question. How did you arrive at the 80%?
Um, kind of a a few different ways. I was in a meeting with some athletic directors from across the district, excuse me, from across the street, across the state, not the street. And we were talking about this. This has been in several meetings that I've been in, not only state-level meetings, but national-level meetings. There have been several surveys in terms of what are people doing? Across the country, across the state, some districts are paying their coaches in full because they made the commitment and have a signed contract. Other districts are paying nothing. Some are paying 50%, some are paying 75%. Some of them are paying a percentage based on their years of experience, which I thought that one was a little unusual. Some people are paying a flat rate. Some people are paying their varsity coaches $2,000, their sub-varsity and assistant coaches $1,500, and their middle school coaches $1,000. So it was more looking at that. So honestly, I started with the 80%. Just thinking about, again, the commitment level, everything that our head coaches have done since last spring, and moving forward, and I looked at the numbers and said, what would that give us? And then when I compared that savings, if you will, to our loss of revenue from spring athletic user fees and saw that they basically were the same, I looked at it as a budget-neutral item at that point. And that's why I came forward with that proposal.
Okay. I guess I asked that in that I see if this 80% paid, this 20% not paid, and considering they didn't hold practices which are very time-consuming, they didn't have games, they didn't have to travel. In my mind, I think it's a little high. I understand our commitment, they had signed contracts. But I think the value and the time put into practices and games and traveling is, would be more than 20% of what they do. So I'm at a point where I do want to give them something, but I'm, I'm not comfortable with the 80% number. Ms. Brown, I know you have a comment or a question?
It's kind of a little bit of both. So I, you mentioned that we kind of have a difficult time. We had several positions that went unfilled, maybe because we pay less than other We had several positions that went unfilled, maybe because we pay less than other nearby districts. How much kind of added benefit would this have for next year's coaches retention to provide some kind of stipend?
I I don't have a crystal ball, so I can't, you know, see into the future. I wish I could. Um, but I feel very strongly that this would be, as I said a few minutes ago, a statement to our coaches that they are valued. And that would, I think, retain some of them who may have looked elsewhere.
And, um, my other follow-up would, do you know, you mentioned what people are doing nationally. Do you know what other folks are doing here locally?
In, in the state of New Hampshire, um, we did a survey and it, as I said, it's all over the place. There are some districts still paying 100%. There are some districts paying nothing. And then it's everywhere in between. Some are paying 50%, some are paying 75%, some are paying a flat dollar amount based on what position you hold.
Okay. Um, I, I quite frankly would like a little bit more time to think about this uh, before it's sent to the board. When is our next meeting, uh, Mr. Donovan? June something?
Uh, June something. Tara, do you know?
June 9th.
June 9th. Okay.
Um, Board of Ed meeting that would follow would be the following week around the 17th.
Okay, okay. Uh, Mr. Greeno or Ms. Johnson, do you have any problems with taking a little bit more time and think about this? And maybe doing a little research to see what our area, uh, neighbors are paying? As I said, I think 80% is a little high.
I don't have any problem waiting, but
Okay.
I, I, I think that 50% and 80%, we're, we're already paying, uh, some of the lowest stipends around. So, um, I, I thought that 50 and 80% would be something that I could, I could back, you know? But, uh, but, uh, if, if the committee feels different, you know, I understand.
I don't have a problem with the 50 or 80%. Like I said at the beginning, it's not their fault over what happened here. Um, you know, I think we're all biting the bullet, uh, this year that, um, and I mean, it is a lot of money, but it's not, it's little money. And, um, I would go with either 50 or 80% to give them, um, some, some, a stipend. Um, although they, you know, they couldn't do what they were hired to do, but again, it's not their fault over what happened.
So would one of you like to bring a motion forward?
Um, I move that we pay the high school varsity and the middle school head coaches 80% of their stipend.
Um, the sub varsity was 50%, so
Was it? And this, and then we can add there, and the sub varsity 50%.
Okay, and I will second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, could you call the roll, Mr. Greeno?
Um, sure. Um, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno votes yes. Ms. Oden?
No.
Okay, motion, motion carries 2 to 1.
2 to 1. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jengris.
Thank you. May I just add one thing and potentially ask a question? Um, Mrs. Oden, I understand and respect your idea of wanting more time to think about it and research it. It is, it has been put out to coaches with the, um, bi-weekly pay scale that they are expecting their stipend on June 4th. So I just think it would be important that if they are not going to receive that on June 4th, that that is communicated prior to then.
Well, it, it will go to the next board meeting, which I believe is this week. Is that correct, Mr. Donovan?
It is this week. I'm not sure motions made tonight will go this week. They would go to the following board meeting.
I believe they'll go to the next one since the agenda's already been set for Thursday's meeting. So the next meeting would be on Wednesday, May 27.
Okay, and would that make it possible for those stipends to be paid in June?
Sure.
Okay.
Great. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
Hi, Lisa.
Stay safe. Okay, the next item on the agenda is contracts. And I think, Mr. Smith, you, I think you came probably 20, 25 minutes ago, and I didn't interrupt Ms. Jengris to say that you had arrived.
Uh, I'm definitely here. Thank you.
You are. Okay, if you want to speak to the contracts?
Okay, thank you and good evening, everybody. Um, so I'll first I'll address the inspection of the gym's, um, bleachers and the basketball backstops. So we do have money, some money in the budget to address this. Uh, we, it's, uh, for safety reasons, primarily for the backstops, uh, we have safety straps in case the the cables let loose. There's a secondary, uh, means of, of keeping everything from crashing to the ground or, or hitting somebody. Um, so we, we strongly recommend we pursue that. In addition, we have, uh, bleacher repairs. And I found one company that'll do both of these things. The bleachers, uh, these are inspections. So once they do the inspection, they come back to us and say, okay, this is what we found wrong. Most often, they will give us their price to repair or address the issue. Um, and just as often, we end up doing a lot of the work in-house. So the proposal for tonight is just to do the inspection. And, um, it's with, uh, A-plus athletic products, $11,000, um, funds from our plant operations budget line, the contract services, which is 91.1.22.26.20.53628. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Ms. Johnson, I see your hand.
My hand is always up, I guess. Okay, so we have not, we're just hiring A-plus athletic products to do the inspection, right? Because it hasn't been done yet.
That's correct.
Okay, and we didn't put anything out to bid because there's no other companies?
Yes, this is a very specialized thing. We, we were a company by the name of Good Room for many, many years, and they eventually, uh, I think the owner retired. And, uh, in this case, we've been asking other facility directors, and there just aren't many people out there that do this sort of work.
And we know it's definitely going to be $11,000?
Yes.
It's not going to be any, anymore?
That's correct. For the inspections, it's 11,000 even.
Okay, because I was going to put in there not to exceed the $11,000.
Yeah, but we, I mean, you can do that. Um, that's exactly the quote they provided.
I want to make sure that it doesn't get changed in the process. So maybe if we're going to agree on this, we put in there not to exceed $11,000.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Ms. Brown?
No, I was just curious. Um, this is for both high schools and all three middle schools?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and, um, just an idea of maybe a little cost savings. Um, is there any chance that Elm Street would not be on the cycle to be inspected, that we could skip it since we won't be using it for quite as longer?
Uh, I wouldn't, just because, uh, very this is, this is primarily this is for safety.
Right.
Um, and we're going to be using Elm Street for two, two more years after this school year, and, uh, I, I would skip at this point. If this was a year from now, we only have one year to go, that I might agree with you. Oh, that's potential cost savings.
Okay, thank you. I think safety comes first, so that's a great idea. Thanks.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Ms. Johnson, do you have a motion?
Yes. I move that we give the contract to A-plus athletic products INC. in the amount of 11, of not to exceed $11,000 with funds from the plant operation budget line 91.1.22.26.20.53628 for contract services.
Do we have a second? I'll second that.
I'll, okay.
Sorry, Mr. Greeno, sorry. Okay, uh, Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is a yes. Okay, passed unanimously. Okay, next item. You're up again, Mr. Smith.
Yes, uh, so this case, I'm recommending awarding a contract for the security vestigial work at uh, Penchuck Middle School and Fairgrounds Middle School. As, um, some of you may be aware, I don't know if some of you are new to the board. Last year, we applied for and received grants from the state's, uh, Public School Infrastructure Fund, uh, which was specifically to address security and safety in our schools. So we received the grants, uh, for, uh, two high schools, uh, two middle schools, and five elementary schools. Um, I believe we we applied for some other grants in other elementary schools, but the, the price was too high to proceed with it. So that, that grant was an 80/20 grant. So the state provides 80% of the cost and we provide 20%. Um, the way the city has addressed this is they set up an account that we can draw from for the entire, uh, amount. We sent them the, our 20%. Then when the state rescends the 80%, it goes straight to the city. And, um, it just allows us to proceed with the work and, and have the money in hand. Um, the work at the two high schools, uh, we're working with in-house personnel. It's fairly minor. It's primarily um, beefing up the security vestigial, providing, um, a screen between the security personnel and incoming people. That is, uh, also bullet-resistant. Um, but does provide a pass-through. It's kind of similar. You may be familiar with what, um, we did at Broad Street. So there's a window there and a pass-through underneath, uh, with a speaker. Uh, we are uh, we, we contracted with Harriman Architects to do all the design work for this. Um, some of it's relatively easy, but we still need to go to the building department of the city to get permits. Uh, so having a architect, a professional engineering stamp, professional architect stamp on the drawings makes it much easier. And, uh, it's kind of what the city's come to expect from us. So then the final piece, and so those designs are still ongoing. We're working with, uh, the architect and the principals and the secretaries, uh, to finalize those designs. Once we receive and finalize designs, we'll go apply for permit and do that work in-house. So the final piece is for the middle schools. Um, as you're aware, we've talked about it, the middle school project. Fairgrounds is, uh, the first work, uh, that we posed to do this summer. And then Penetra would also be initiated this summer. The, uh, the other part about that grant, as I mentioned, is it has to be spent and, um, the work approved by the end of this calendar year. So as you're aware, Harriman is the architect post for the project as well, and Harvey Construction is our construction manager. Um, this, uh, this particular teaming, uh, really allows us to leverage our grant funds with the construction money. Uh, because doing these projects in and of themselves, by themselves, uh, probably not doable with the amount of money that we're receiving in the grant. But by doing it with the construction money, uh, enables us to do that. Um, for example, you're familiar with, uh, Fairgrounds Middle School. You can go in the main entrance, you're buzzed in. Then you have to walk down the hallway to get to the office. Um, with this, that, that was always on our radar, uh, things to improve, so, similar to what we did Sunset Heights with that construction job. Um, so we're actually moving the main office closer to the main entrance. Actually, it's going to butt the main entrance. As you go into the front door, there will be a, um, again, a pass-through window, uh, bulletproof with, uh, pass-through underneath and speaker, so that the secretary can then conduct business, uh, wherever it comes in school. So it, it's, 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 uh, very timely that the construction project happens to be going on, that we could actually get all the work done, we'd like to get done. So we've received, uh, $75,000 for Fairgrounds Middle School and 55 for Penetra. Um, and to do this work, uh, to, to enable us to show the state that we spent the money on this project, we need to set aside, uh, or pay for the 75 and 55 separate from the construction project. Um, they want to actually see the invoices. So we figured the best way to do that was to have, uh, Harvey charges specifically of, for, for this work. It comes to the amount of $130,000 with funds coming from the public school infrastructure funds. I guess I'll stop there and see if there's any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? I, I do, Mr. Smith. Um, I'm a little bit confused and maybe you can straighten me out. I think on the last projects we had where we get, we got state money, we had to send them pictures and proof that had, it had already been, uh, done. So will the work on Fairgrounds and Penetra be done by the time uh, the state has a deadline for when our projects have to be done? I, I think it's the end of the year, but I'm not sure.
It is the end of the year. And yes, so the, um, I'm, I'm very confident the work at Penetra will be done. That's a little simpler to do. Well, we've actually changed the design a little bit to make it even more simpler, but, uh, working just as well. Um, and you're actually correct. We have to show pictures and show the receipts for the work, um, as completed. Uh, my, my plan is to do that. And perhaps the work won't be 100% done at Fairgrounds Middle School. It'll, it'll be close. Uh, because that's really the first phase of the work. But as long as, I feel as long as we show pictures of the work that we're billing them for, then we should be okay.
So even if the work isn't completed at Fairgrounds, you feel confident the state will still give us the entire amount that they've already approved for us?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Greeno or Ms. Johnson, do you have any, any questions? Mr. Donovan? Do you have any, any concerns or any questions?
No, um, the, the state was very strict with these funds, as you mentioned, with pictures and things like that. Everyone has to, board members have to approve all the invoices that we send back to the state to get the 80%. Um, but I think we've worked pretty well with them on all the previous projects. So I believe on the, since Penetra should be done, Fairgrounds will be substantially done. Um, and I think we could show a picture enough that you know, it, it'll be done. Because there's a possibility, I guess, that because Fairgrounds is a larger project, this is just a small piece of it, that it could be something missing. But if the enclosure part is done, I think we'll be all set.
Can you tell me, um, Mr. Smith, seeing where, you know, we're going through this pandemic and that we're having remote learning, are the, are there, um, I believe it's Harriman, are they going to be able to get started a little sooner than they would have if the kids had been at the school?
Um, not really, because the, putting together the, um, the plans for this takes time. And there's a lot of back and forth between the architect and us and the construction manager. Uh, we never thought that we'd get this done, uh, or started before the beginning of July anyway.
Okay.
So I guess the short answer is no. Uh, this, this is proceeding on the course. It, it did all along. Really can't be, uh, accelerated any at all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so looking for a motion. Mr. Greeno? Were you ready?
Yes. Um, I move to approve the contract with Harvey Construction in the amount of 130,000 with funds from the public school infrastructure grant funds.
Paul?
I'll second.
Second? Okay, we'll have a vote. Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden votes yes. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, and have a good evening.
Uh, you too.
You too.
Stay well. Okay, next item on the agenda is the bus bid analysis. Okay, Mr. Donovan, do you want to speak to that?
Certainly. Um, so we did the bus RFP back a few months ago. We received, um, three bids from the three national companies, the three large companies. None of the smaller companies bid. I think we've been out to bid twice in the last six years now and I would have thought smaller companies would have been interested, but I think the capital investment for the smaller companies is a bit too much to come up with over a hundred buses. So they haven't, they haven't bid on, on this contract either, either time. So this time we did get the large three, the incumbent who was first student, STA, which is Student Transportation of America, and Durham. So we, we sent out the bid. The first sheet behind, the first sheet that's, that's attached with this gives you the cost of the daily bus rate. And by the daily bus rate, that's the cost to bring students to school and bring students home. And what each company does when they do this, they give you a price per day per bus. So the, this current school year, that price per day per bus is three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. So that's the first part of the bid. And when you look at the first page of the analysis, you can see that the big difference is in the first year. First student had an increase of five point seven five percent. And the other two had increases of about fifteen percent. That's obviously a significant increase. And the reason for that increase was that there was a, the bus drivers are part of a union, the Teamsters Union. They've signed a contract with First Student. Any of the larger bus companies like STA or Durham will always keep that contract. They won't try to create another one because most of the people that work for them are also part of the Teamsters Union. So, and the Teamsters Union actually showed up at the bid opening to let us know that they expected those contract rates to be met. So so basically, if you look at that, you'll notice that obviously
we, we lost you, Mr. Donovan. Tara, can you get to him?
Dan, we have no audio.
Okay, can hear it again?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, I don't, the second bid from Durham has, has two caveats. One, that we would have to supply our own fuel. And two, and, and fuel is typically about eighty percent of their cost, which in this is probably around twenty dollars, twenty-four dollars or so towards the rate. But the other thing is the bus age. In our, in our bid, we said we'd like a five-year average. This would allow them to have a ten-year average. So with the ten-year average, if we went with the second bid, A, we'd have to pay fuel, and by the time we did that, it would cost us more. And B, we don't want an average ten-year buses because they'll be broken down all the time. So I think based upon this analysis, it, it shows that First Student would certainly be the winner of the bid. The second attachment describes all the sort of other costs that we have as part of a bus bid. These are all the costs for things like late buses, midday buses, shuttle buses, the costs of monitors, because monitors, they simply, we simply pay for the, for the monitors, their salary and their benefits. And their benefits are relatively small amounts of money. So if you look at, at that sheet, you'll also notice that in each of the items, whether it's the cost per hour for a field or athletic trip, the late bus, the midday bus, the shuttle bus, or the monitors cost per hour, they're all lower for First Student than they are for the other two vendors. So I think it's pretty clear that the incumbent put together the best bid. And it's my suggestion that we approve the bid with First Student and approve administration to negotiate a contract. So basically, this will be a two-part process. The board will approve the bid. We will then go to First Student and we'll negotiate a contract. We do obviously have a contract in place with them now. We should probably add a few things to that. If anyone would like to suggest any items to add to it, that's fine. It'd be nice to be able to do that during the negotiations. Excuse me. I and hope to able, hope to be able to put together the contract and have it at the next finance and ops in June. Any questions?
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Because I know the last time when we were talking about this, I started asking about the cost of fuel. And I think we said that we could probably put something in there because fuel is so low. I don't want to pay like five dollars a gallon in a contract right now. I mean, I guess it should probably be in the contract, the cost of fuel today. And then if fuel goes up, then we'll, you know, adjust the contract, the price of the fuel going forward.
Yeah, we could do that. You can, there's a couple of different ways. We can maybe look at it if it goes way up or if it goes way down. Either way.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Brown?
I had a couple of questions. One, the first one was actually kind of in regards to what Ms. Johnson was saying. Right now, fuel is kind of historically low. And I looked up the projections. They're nationally that it's going to supposedly going to stay low for at least another two or three years, lower than it has been. Is that something that long-term, so these numbers are going up, obviously five percent this year, three point two five percent every year after that? Is that strictly for pay increases for folks? Because you know, if we're talking about fuel costs going down potentially or staying where they are right now, and then the cost of living is probably, I think the projection right now for, well, twenty twenty was only one point six percent, two thousand nineteen was two point eight percent. They're saying it might get a one percent in twenty twenty-one. Where's the three point two five coming from?
I think two areas are where the increases are. A, the cost of buses. And B, the salary cost. Now, I can probably get a copy of the contract so we could see what the contract increases are. So I could, but I know that the, the, the cost of buses, as, as most things manufactured are going up. Those are the two areas going up. The, the most significant cost to First Student is their payroll and their benefits. That's close to sixty percent of their cost. Fuel is seven to eight percent. Now, if it goes down, it might drop a bit. But fuel is a relatively small piece of it. And then the cost of, of upkeep of the buses and, and purchase of the buses and depreciation and things like that is about twenty percent of a bid. So even though fuel is a component, it's a relatively small component percentage-wise.
Do you think that it's worth the risks? I'm guessing that in our contract, it states that even if the bus, the actual age of the bus was older, let's say it's a ten-year-old bus as opposed to a five-year-old bus, we must have some kind of contingency in our contracts that says they're going to have penalties if they don't provide us with quality service. You know, if our buses are breaking down every two days as opposed to buses break, breaking down once, once a month. Isn't there something in the contract? So if we were to go with a company that was not going to promise us necessarily new buses, they should still promise us working buses and safe buses, correct?
Yes, we did. We put in the RFP. I don't remember it off the top of my head here. I don't have it in front of me, but we did talk about the average age of buses and we put in penalties if they don't have enough buses to run on any given day and what that bus, what that penalty would be.
Okay. And I guess my last question would be, when we enter into the contract negotiations coming up, are we going to have to factor in social distancing guidelines or any kind of cleaning? Like, is that going to be on anybody's radar for next year?
Good question. I was speaking with the transportation director earlier today. We'll probably talk, put something in there regarding a pandemic. I mean, most bus contracts never had that. A couple did. But I think we probably can put something, we'll have a discussion with them and, and see if we can get something in there. Keep in mind, this is a national company, so they need to get approval of things. That's why the negotiations take a little bit of time, but we're certainly going to talk about it. I, I, after, I guess after we talk about it, I can, I can let you know more.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan.
Mr. Greeno, do you have any questions? Any comments?
No, not at this time, but I want to thank Ms. Brown for those questions. That was, that was a good point.
Mr. Donovan, can I ask you, do, do any of our buses have cameras on them?
The buses all have cameras.
They all have cameras?
They do now, and that was part of the RFP that they continue to have cameras. They don't all have sound per se because of different rules, but they all have cameras.
Okay, thank you. Also, we, we have buses that are five years older or less. How many times, is it often, I should put it that way, is it often that we have a situation where a bus run cannot be made? They have to go back and it's late because there aren't enough buses that are in good working order? Have we, have we run into that situation very often?
No. Our, our issue with being late occasionally is more the number of drivers, not the functioning buses.
Okay. And you think with the salary increase that they're getting that, that will not be quite the issue?
I certainly hope so. That's been one of the things that they claimed would, would help. And, and to be honest, they're going to be making about twenty-five dollars an hour. Now, you do have to get the license, which takes some work and takes some skill, but for a job like that, for twenty-five dollars an hour, that's a pretty good rate of pay. So I'm hoping that A, we, nobody will leave us because we'll be the highest we'll have the highest paid bus drivers in the general area. So I, I wouldn't think anyone would leave us to go somewhere else to make less money. And hopefully, we'll be able to bring in some, some new drivers.
I have to say, as a teacher, when I was watching kids get on the bus and snowy days, you'd give them a lecture, it's busy. I have to say, I think school bus drivers have a very, very difficult and challenging job. They carry all our kids. And sometimes the roads are slippery, rough traffic. You know, people, people rushing by stopped school buses. I, I've seen it happen several times this year. So you know, I, I can understand why they're getting the pay they're getting. They get a lot of responsibility and really, they, they don't work a full day, but their whole day is tied up because of the schedule they have. So Ms. Ms. Brown, did you have your hand raised? You sure? Okay. Does anybody have a motion to have Mr. Donovan go move forward with contract negotiations with First Student? Mr. Greeno?
I move to approve the bid with First Contract and have administration begin contract negotiations.
First student, you mean?
With First Student.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. First student contract, yeah.
I'll second it.
Long day.
Paul, Paul, a second. Okay, let me see. Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is yes. We have a unanimous vote on that. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the financial forecast, April to Monday.
Okay. Now, due to the fact that I just finished this today and it's a giant spreadsheet, I probably suggest what you do is take your April financial report, which should have been in your package, and we can kind of use that as a guide. So to explain to everybody what I do, this time of year, I try to forecast where we're going to be at the end of the year based upon the current budget. This year is obviously trickier than any other year with all the changes. And next year is going to be, I'm probably going to really enjoy it because there's going to be all kinds of different things budget-wise. There's going to be money coming in from different places and different uses. It, it'll be a fun year if you like to play with budgets. But the, this is the first forecast that I do. This forecast will get better and better. As I, as I work on it, and I typically, from now on, every two or three weeks, I'll take a look at this and I'll report on it each month. When I report it on, when I report on it next month, I think you'll see it'll be a lot, lot more accurate. I'll have a lot more comfort around the numbers. But taking a look at the financial, at, at the budget, at this point in time, we are going to see significant savings on the substitute line, as you might expect. It's probably going to be about a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar savings. Now, keep in mind, this is just Dan Donovan's forecast. Don't, don't, this isn't, don't put this in writing and go talk to the newspaper, okay? My forecast says
I'm sorry, how much was that again?
Two hundred and eighty thousand is what I'm projecting for savings. It's, that's the wages per diem line, which is the five, one, four, one, two. So we should be seeing reasonable savings on that line. The overtime will be some savings to the budget. It'll be much less than last year. Because right now, there's very little overtime. So you're going to see a savings there. Other than that, most of the other lines on the salaries and wages, the wages full-time, part-time, and those bottom numbers, the salary adjustments, the escrow transfers, what those, if you think about it, what those are is pretty much base pay for all our staff. Okay, so typically, when we put the budget together, you, you end up either in wages full-time or wages part-time. Then what we do is we, if we don't have a contract in place, we put forward a salary adjustment and it's done in a, in a group format. So that's what those numbers are. In a sense, you could take those amounts in those last three lines and transfer them up into the wages full-time at some point. We don't usually do that during the year. But those are all the funds and monies that are available to basically pay our staff. At this point in time, I'm showing a significant savings in that area to the point that I've done two of my three tests and they both came out pretty close. But the savings number that it's showing, which is over one point five million, seems high to me. I don't know why it's that high. So the one thing that I need to do, that I didn't have a chance to do yet, is to go back. I break this out in different ways. I, I do, if you're looking at the the month-by-month expenditure report, I basically roll that forward. That's one way I do it. The other way I do it is I go in and I review the payroll by group. For example, AFSMI payroll, Paris payroll, teachers' payrolls, all that, and I do it by group. And then I compare those and I compare the numbers. Now, in doing those numbers, both ended up pretty close. But But like I said, it's about a million and a half below what, what the budget was. So I have to dig into the budget more to say, how come that is so? There is attrition all the time, and I only budget 350,000 because you need to be conservative with that. Maybe that number's a lot higher, that might explain some of it. And maybe there was, maybe there were more people that actually left than we brought in people at lower salaries than I thought. So that's the, the one piece that I haven't done yet. And obviously it's a significant amount, though I need to do it and I will do it, and I'll be able to report on that soon. But at least it's good to say we're under budget instead of we're over budget. That's my biggest fear usually. Okay, the next section, the fringe benefits. You don't have to really worry about those because those are placed into our budget by the city. They make the budget, they make the allocation, and they make the charges. So if they're over or under, if it's under the budget, we don't get to keep it. If it's over the budget, we don't have to cover it. So those are big numbers, but they're, they're not, not, we don't really have to worry about those. At the bottom of that group of benefits, there's those three benefits. The educational assistance, which is the tuition that's within all the contracts. I'm assuming we'll get about 15 to 16,000 dollars savings on that line. We typically do have savings on that line, and I would expect it this year. Then the, the next group of accounts, professional technical services. I projected those to pretty much, we're going to pretty much break even. We're going to, we're going to spend pretty much what those budgeted lines are based on where we are now and my knowledge of those accounts going forward. So I think that's going to be pretty flat according to the budget. The, the next set of accounts is property services. Now, the, the first three accounts there, the electricity, the heating, gas, and the water. I, I'm projecting right now, and this number will get a lot better next month when I have a, a lot more invoices in. But with students not being in the schools and it being a relatively warm year, it's been sort of a chilly spring, but the students haven't been in during the spring. I'm expecting savings in, in those accounts. I think the water account will be pretty much even. But I'm expecting savings of probably about 120,000 or so in the heating account. And in the electric account, 60 to 70,000. I think those are conservative numbers, would be better than that. But at this point, my guesses will be, will be in good shape on that. The rest of the accounts in that property services are going to pretty much balance out. There, excuse me, there's a few things in there. They're mostly maintenance type things, and when we budget maintenance, we kind of know what the costs are going to be. So I would suggest most of those accounts will, will even out. The bottom account there, rentals, will probably save a little bit of money because we're not going to have as big a cost for the graduation on the rentals. So there'll probably be some money at the high school level savings on that. The next set of accounts are, there's the telephone accounts to start. The telephone voice account will overrun the budget probably by 25 to 30,000. It's done that the last couple of years. We finally will start making some progress on that. What happened with this account was when we put in the new phone system a couple of years ago, we assumed we would then save money on a lot of the lines. Well, we never got around to doing that with a lot of the changes in IT with the staff. There's a lot, I think, a lot of lines out there that we don't necessarily need that we're continuing to pay for. So working with Greg now, we're going to start gathering all the data. Had we not had this closing down of the office, we probably would have more to say on that right now, but it is in queue to get done. So it will overrun this, this year, but I'm hoping that we'll be able to start getting some savings next year. And then if you look at a lot of these other line items here, until you get down to the transportation pieces, the relatively small budget items, but we will be seeing some savings in the travel. People aren't going to be able to travel. We will see some savings in the mileage because teachers and administration aren't moving around from one school to another. And we'll probably see some savings in the postage account also. So it's not going to be huge amounts of money, but combined probably about 25,000 savings in those lines. And we'll also, there's a line item there, game officials. That is one of Lisa's lines, and that's what we would pay for the officials to officiate our games, our athletic contests. Obviously, they're not going to take place, so we'll see savings there of about $35,000. And then you go down and you'll see the regular transportation services and the sped transportation services. Now, these are the bus costs. Most of the bus costs come from first student, though there is also the piece about the, the out of district students, some of which travel quite far. There's some fairly significant costs with those. So as you would suggest, A, we've made the agreement with first student, we're at about 80%. So you're going to see about a 20% savings on the first student contracts. And you will notice that you will not be paying any of those shuttle buses or any of those other costs. So between that and the out of district transportation, where the students simply aren't making the trips, we're not paying for those, we'll probably see a savings about 650,000 on the bus. And, and like I said, that number would be real tight come next month, but that's my estimate as of now. That's a rare occurrence. We rarely have any savings in the bus line. Typically, we, because of out of district, we typically overrun that line. And then there's my favorite item, item on the, the tuition out of district, which is for all the students that go to the out of district schools. Just about every one of those schools is doing virtual learning. So we thought for a while that we might save some money in this area. We are under budget on, in this line, we have been for a while. I'm projecting we're probably going to overrun this line by about 700, $750,000. Based upon, we, we do a monthly review with the special ed department and out of district. We have a list of all the students, where they go, the cost per month, how much the state picks up, how much we have to pay. It's a fairly exhausted spreadsheet. But a lot of the, the schools went up significantly. One of the schools, Lighthouse, where, which we send more students there, about 18 to 20 students. That went up 20,000 per student this year. So even though we had added 800,000 to this line last year to get us within maybe 300,000 or 400,000 of the total, those increases then is going to push it up. So, but I do tell people, we do have a special revenue account that we get revenue in from students that come to our schools. If we overrun this line and there isn't other funds available in, in the operating budget, we could always charge some of it there. Based on what I've done so far in this forecast, I don't think we're going to have to do that, especially with the bus savings. I think that's going to offset and, and for the most part, any increase here. So that's, that's kind of the good news there. And then other than that, I think most of the supplies and materials accounts, those are basically, there's a lot of accounts listed there, but they're basically managed by either Sean Smith, who does a good job spending, he spends, he needs more than we give him, so he pretty much spends most of what we give him. There's usually a little bit that doesn't get spent, but, and the rest of it, as far as the educational supplies and office supplies and medical supplies, those are mostly school funds. We give each school so much money to spend, most of their money, they put in these accounts, and this is where they spend them. We did set up a process where every secretary has now the capability to go in and, and spend the rest of the year money. When we look at the transfer report next, you'll see some of that happening. So typically, I expect most of these funds to be spent. They're money that we either give to Sean or we give to the schools. So I don't, I don't have any issue. I think we should spend most of this money because then we won't get complaints for, from all those students and teachers. The indirect cost line, that's the revenue we get back for managing grants. 2.5% of most of the grants comes back to us as revenue to cover the cost of us managing those grants. We get about 210,000 a year, we'll probably come right around there. And then the equipment line is mostly computer equipment and some other equipment. Well, probably most of that is managed either by schools or by IT. As, as you're aware, we have lots of needs in those areas, so I expect those to be spent down pretty much to zero. And then the, at the very end of the budget of the sheet, you'll see it's the budget adjustments. And there's $350,000, which is expense transfers. That's made up of two things. One, the revenues that we're getting from the students for sports. Well, we budgeted at 180, we're going to get about 145 because we're not getting money this spring. And the facility rentals, where we rent out our facilities. Due to the closure of the schools, we're, we're losing funds from that account. The spring is our biggest rental season. We have lots of dance companies and things like that that come in. So we budgeted, I think, 135, 140,000 and the, I think it's coming in at about 114. So it's about 70,000 less than last year, mostly due to the spring season, but that's one of the other sort of costs of, costs of COVID, so to speak. But like I said, I think based upon some of the other accounts where we will save money, what typically might be a difficult thing for the budget probably won't be this year. So all said and done, at this point, I'm, I'm forecasting well over a million dollars of savings at this point. But like I said, come June 9th, or whenever that next meeting is, that number will, will be a lot tighter. I can honestly say this is the first time I've ever had anything over a million. I mean, typically when I do this first forecast, it's minus 250 or something like that. And then I just convince people on the board, don't worry, we'll get there. We will not overspend. And we get there and, and three or four years in a row, we were within about $2,000 of a 105 million budget. But this year, it's, it's very different, as I said. And as I tighten it up, but just right now, it, it looks like there will be a significant surplus at this point in time. But before you try to go spending any money, let's wait until, wait until the first week in June. That's what I have to say, Donnie.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, I started calculating, it's quite a bit of money there. So my question is, if we don't use it, we're going to lose it? Savings, basically?
Well, that's, the school system will not spend it, yes. It would go back to the city and be used to potentially reduce property taxes. Now, one, one thing to mention, and I haven't, another part of our budget, as I'm sure you're aware, is the revenue budget. And our, our big items are coming in, but one of the larger revenues that we have is Medicare revenue. And I think we budgeted about 1.7 million. We maybe have about 400,000 at this point. That money might come in next year, but because of a number of things that happened up at the state where they were, they changed the whole process and required us to do something very different, we couldn't bill the government for Medicare for probably six to seven months. And so for us to catch up, I don't know if we're going to be able to, we're certainly not going to be able to catch up and get that full amount by the end of the school year. Because we have to work with an outside firm based on the way the state changed the process.
So the savings that we, if it's a good amount, I'm sure we have a wish, wish list to use it by the end of the year. So we don't have to give it back to the city for it to go back into the general fund.
We, we could certainly discuss that wish list, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have a question or comment? Okay, Mr. Donovan, I have a question. I, I know we have a hospital at South that was set up. And can you tell me about the expenses of that and how that will be handled? Do you know?
Yes, the expenses to date, I think, are about $90,000. And we have heard, I heard today actually from a Zoom meeting I had with the state, that FEMA will pick up 75% of that cost and 25, the other 25% will be picked up by the state. So there will be no cost to us for what they call the ACS, the alternative care site, alternative care site.
Do you have any type of a list of expenses or requested things that we needed to address the COVID-19? Maybe there were requests made that we couldn't pay or there were requests made that we had to pay because of COVID-19? Do you have any type of a list like that?
We, what we have done is kept a list of all the, what we call COVID-19 costs. For example, the Zoom licenses, increasing the number of VPN licenses for staff, purchase of some Chromebooks, those sorts of things. We do have a list of all those. We did also, this is, you know, news right off the press. We did, we are receiving some of the, what I call COVID cash, which is the CARES Act money. And we had a meeting on that today too, from the state. It looks like they gave a preliminary number to Nashua, and it could be over $3 million that we would have to spend. Now, we don't have to spend, we have, we have between March of 2020 till September of 2021 to spend that money. And we're just learning about the types of things we can spend it on. But as I mentioned at the very beginning of this, that's another chunk of money that we're going to have to sit down and take a good look at and say, okay, how are we going to, how are we going to spend all this money? There's, there's, for the first time since I've been here, there's money that's, we can spend on, on things. So there's that money. There's the 2.9 million that we're supposed to get from the state that's part of our budget. I, to be honest with you, I have a slight concern that we may not get all of that because that money was, the state's going to lose a lot of revenues with COVID. So I'm not sure, that's in next year's budget, which basically starts this summer. So I've asked that question, I don't really, I don't think anyone has the answer, but there's a possibility that we could get that 2.9 million and we're getting this over $3 million from the federal government. So there's, there's lots of money. Now, keep in mind, it's one-time money, it's not hiring people money.
Right, right. Although I believe the mayor in his sheet that he gave us, ELL teachers were in there, plus their insurance.
Yes, he did, he did do that, which is sort of against Dan's rules, but he overruled me on it. But effectively, what, when, when we, if we, if we do that and we, I'm assuming we would do that because of the need for the ELL teachers. But if you think about it, what you're doing is you're using the one-time funds this year. And then the following year, when you put your budget together, you've already expended those, those three teachers have increased your, your base. So if you had, let's say, eight hundred thousand, you could spend on other things. Now you only have six fifty. You sort of jumped the gun on it.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Donovan? Thank you. That was, that was uh, very informative and I know you've been, you've been busy.
Yeah, it's uh, it's, it's a little harder to do when you're by yourself at home.
Yeah.
But like I said, I I'm feeling pretty good about it, except the payroll stuff. I've gotta, I've, I gotta feel better about that.
Okay. Well, I don't think, when did you say our next meeting was?
June.
June, what was the term?
June ninth.
June ninth, okay. Okay, I'm looking for a motion?
I don't think you need a motion on that.
No, to adjourn?
No, no, we got one more thing.
Oh, we get, what, the transfer report, right?
Transfer report, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had it checked out.
Yeah, and for those that, you know, the, the forecast, when we go over the forecast, effectively, we'll go on over the financial report. So, and hopefully, everyone, when we go over the forecast in June, I'll have something that you, you could look at the actual document. Um, it'll, I think it'll make it easier for you, and you can review it in advance if you choose. Okay, so the transfer report for um, April. As I had mentioned before, um, this time of year, the schools are doing their spend down. Um, and the first two of the transfers are actually the athletics department doing their spend down. As you might uh, figure, Lisa being the former math teacher is really good about tracking her money and spending her money. So the first two are Lisa moving, I, moving dollars from uh, budgeted line items to other line items so she can make purchases. Um, from, and it's basically just using up the money that we gave her in the budget. So the first one, she's uh, contracted services, and the second one, she's gonna be purchasing some equipment. So that's what the first two are. Um, the next one is Mount Pleasant Elementary. Uh, they're moving money from their supplies line to furniture to uh, purchase some classroom furniture. They're not specific what it is, but it'll be classroom furniture. The next one is Bicentennial, where they're moving items from office supplies uh, to miscellaneous equipment. Now, it says, I'm hoping this is certainly a typo, because it says we need to move these funds to purchase broken playground equipment. Not sure why we would wanna purchase broken playground equipment. I'm assuming they meant to replace broken playground equipment. So um, that's what that is for. Um, and then Birch Hill, once again, you can see a number of the funds from the various accounts, and they're moving it, and they're purchasing laptops with the unspent supply funds. The next one is also Lisa, moving around travel mileage repair lines to buy equipment. Um, then fairgrounds, uh, middle school. Once again, it's end of year, um, moving money from various accounts um, to purchase some music equipment. And then the last one is Main Dunstable. Um, and they're moving from supplies and publications to purchase uh, forty desks and forty chairs for the classrooms. So um, some people, you know, we may, we may have some money this year with some of these other fundings to cover some other uh, issues we may have with um, furniture, but typically, I allow the schools to use the funds as they see, see, they see fit. So those are the uh, transfers. Probably should have a uh, approval of those.
A motion?
Yes.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the transfers.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay. Could we have a vote? Uh, Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is yes. Uh, passed unanimously. Could, could I just say at this point, Mr. Donovan, um, I, I guess from my experience, I hear from uh, elementary teachers, and I, I saw where Ms. Parity at uh, Main Dunstable was looking at desks and chairs, and that might be a good thing. Should we have some extra money? Those are things that should last. A lot of our elementary schools um, have a lot of desks and chairs that are mismatched, that are very old. Uh, I hear from some of the older students in the elementary schools, sometimes the chairs are much smaller than they really should be for these kids. So I hope that people look closely at uh, the desks and chairs for the classrooms, because uh, it certainly is a benefit to any child to have a purposeized desk and chair for themselves for the day.
Yes, and the uh, two point nine million, assuming we get that, or at least most of that from the state, we do have about two hundred thousand of that. We plan to use the furniture. Um, the high school chairs have gotten the most publicity. But I really don't think the high school needs two hundred thousand. The high schools need two hundred thousand for chairs. That's an awful lot of chairs. So I, but I think in general, if we could, if we received that amount of money, we could use two hundred thousand and, and maybe spread it around to some of the schools.
Uh huh. Was it two hundred or two hundred and fifty? I thought I saw two fifty.
Um, whoa, I thought two hundred, but you might be right.
Okay, uh, yeah. Just jumped out at me, because I know that a lot of the elementary schools have needs. Okay, um, well, have we come to the end finally? I believe we have.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
To adjourn? Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is a yes, unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Brown, for coming. We often don't get visitors here, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Donovan, and congratulations on becoming a grandfather. That's
Hey, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah.